Hey, good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm happy to see people in the audience tonight. It's great. And I know we have some people on Zoom too. All right, could you please stand and salute the flag with me? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, could I have council approval of the agenda?
Atkinson will make the motion.
Singleton, a second.
Okay, then it's been motioned and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have number two, awards presentation, appointments, and proclamations. Precision concrete cutting project update.
All right, so I was asked to give a more or less high-level overview of what's been happening. I don't know if you guys have noticed, some of these sidewalks are shaved down a little bit, look a little weird. But this is basically just what's been happening the past few months with that and what may be happening in the future. So the work is being done by a company out of LA called Precision Concrete Cutting. And they, you know, repair sidewalks through a method known as shaving. Basically, there's a guy out there with a shop vac and like a, basically a sander, but it's a little bit more complex than that. And they shave down those lips that people fall over, the lifted up panels. Back in October, we entered into a contract with them to do a full inspection of like every hole, every lifted panel, every messed up piece of a sidewalk throughout the whole city. As of May 3rd, they finished that inspection. It took them a while, but we have the reports for all but two of those, the zones. We're still waiting on those. Repairs for two, three, and four districts. I'm sorry, two and four have been finished. Three has been, it's ready to move forward, but it has not been finished yet. When we, when, when we organized this, we did this by, you know, age of the district, right? So, you know, the oldest sidewalk would be first and then, you know, so on and so forth, up, up to the newest. For District Two, there have been 827 repairs. And that was $52,000. For District Four, there was 573 repairs, or $34,000. And District Three, there will be 455. And that's projected to be 40,000. This is sort of what I'm speaking of. This is what it looks like. So basically you have before and after side by side, you know, for all the different variations. And a lot of this is, you know, to combat the whole ADA compliance and all that stuff. You know, so people don't, you know, fall over sidewalks. For the most part, they can only get, we can only afford, you know, the ones that are more than a half inch. And they can only do the ones that are less than two inches or, you know, about 50% of the panel width. Here's kind of a map of every point that was fixed in District Two. Like I said, there was 827. If we wanted, you know, to fix absolutely every, you know, lifted panel without the holes and, you know, weathered sidewalk, it would be 1,740 spots. It's a lot. District Three, there are 455 pending. This has not been done yet. And there was 1,012 that were one quarter inch or more. So, you know, more or less half of them got fixed. District Four, there were 573 repairs. And 1,259 were one quarter inch or more. And the map that I'm showing you on these last two, so that one and that one, that is a map of every spot that they located that, you know, needed to be fixed, right? So, like I said, they, they can't fix everything. A part of this was to get the inspection done so that we can know how to, you know, what is actually out there and how to prioritize things and fix those things as best we can. And like I said, there are, there, when they're finished with, you know, all their shaving, there will still be, you know, sidewalks with holes in it or weathered or, you know, really high lifted panels. But the intent is to, is to mitigate that stuff through, you know, you know, having those put into, you know, different projects through, you know, potentially be a cost share program when that gets running. Or Public Works, you know, would even be able to fix some of these things pretty easily. They're actually making a separate list of things that are relatively easy to fix. You know, fill holes or just small zones that like we can fix really easily. So we can target those areas for a very low price. Just the last note, we realize that this is not the best looking thing. Like, it doesn't look awesome. I'm sure that like everyone would want a new sidewalk, but that's not the reality that we face. It's just the biggest bang for your buck, so to speak. That's it.
Any questions for Larry? Larry, I had one question, and this was brought up by one of the citizens and staff. Were they notified before any of this happened? Any, you know, if, if you were going to do something in their front yard, was that, were they notified at all?
No, we did do press releases, you know, prior to the work starting, but it'd be very difficult to notify every single resident.
I know, because you overhead that many, yeah. Okay, I was just wondering on that, how you, how you notified them? And so, so you did put it in the paper and stuff like that, and then our web-
I believe it was just on-
On our website, probably.
And the, and Facebook.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your report. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, next we'll go to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the election, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. And I also have this. Citizens' comments will be timed by the city clerk. She will alert you when you have 10 seconds remaining. If you continue speaking, you will be asked to end your public comment at the three-minute mark. As a reminder, citizens' comments can no longer be made via Zoom. All citizens' comments must now be made in person or submitted in writing to the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting. Thank you. Do we have anybody? Okay. Mary?
Mary Jones. I just am going to respectfully ask that the microphones be turned on because when he was talking, it wasn't on for, and he, I, it's not-
You can't hear me? It's, it shows that it's on here.
Because it's not picking up, it's not loud enough to pick up on my recording. So, that's the only thing I had to say. Hi.
All right, thank you. Larry, could you check on that for us, please?
I just bumped up the volume.
Okay, next, who would be, sir, in the back? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, hi. So my name is Dr. Peter Banos, and I represent a group of pilots and airmen based mostly at the Coalinga Airport. And we want to offer to help make the Coalinga Airport a safe, functional airport and to help it comply with federal regulations and with the Coalinga Airport assurances to the FAA. Now, I've been discussing this with, in a manner of speaking, with airport management since 2017. And since 2019, the FAA has been looking into areas of operation at the Coalinga Airport to be improved. A few weeks ago, the FAA issued a report regarding the Coalinga Airport, requesting plans of correction for some identified issues. You may have, I think you probably have that report. The rest of you may, may or may not have that report. I've asked airport management to forward the report to the city council. If you haven't gotten it, please give me your email, and I'd be happy to forward it to you. It's quite a pointed report. A request has been made to send that report to the city council. In brief, the FAA report mentions a number of different issues, including dysfunctional lighting, dysfunctional runway, possible violations of multiple FAA regulations, and the apparent fact that applications for, basically what's an entitlement for $150,000 from the FAA every year have not been made since 2017, which would have paid for a lot of these issues. Again, plans of correction have been requested with further investigation possible. And we want to help the new Coalinga Airport become a safe, functional airport. We want to open a dialogue with the city council regarding, regarding this issue and what we can do to help. Besides interest in knowledge in aviation, we have, among us, corporate management experience, financial experience, project management experience, and, and a source of advice and the person of an airport manager from another airport who is interested, who is willing to help us. We hope that you, the city council, will take advantage of this opportunity of some of the city residents offering to help maintain and improve this currently crumbling city asset and arrange a later meeting to describe what we can do to help. I've tried to get myself placed on the regular city council agenda, but was unable. And we'd like to make the airport and thus Coalinga better. And I'd like to, again, open up a dialogue, get information about how we can arrange a later meeting for future help.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does staff have your phone number? Second? Does staff have your phone number?
Yes, they do. They have my phone number and email. And thus far, there's been very little communication.
I received the letter yesterday. I haven't forwarded it to anybody yet. Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mayor, I do have two comments that were emailed in.
Okay, we have one more person live.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
All right, Mayor Council. Tonight, I'd just like to give my support for to rename the portion of Durian outside of City Hall as Lander Lane honorarily. I had seen a post on Facebook where someone confused this issue and had to think that it had something to do with cannabis, which I can't see how that would have anything to do with cannabis at all. It's ridiculous. And then the next thing is streaming city council meetings live on Facebook. It's a great idea. You know, a lot of people, that's their only avenue at the moment to be able to watch. And then, as far as the discussion items, Canoreggs. So you may not use them very often, but their contract is worth its weight in gold, literally. Like, they normally charge people like 50 grand a year to have access to this. And even if you only looked at it twice, if it helped you make a good decision in order to, you know, know what your neighbors were doing with taxes and regulations so that you could be in, in good competition with them, it would be worth the money. You're bringing in a million dollars a year almost on cannabis revenue. 11,000 a year doesn't seem like a ton of money. I'm not here representing them, but I remember them, and they're a decent company. And they have a lot of, of know-all, and you guys are going to be going into times where things are going to change. And so I would suggest keeping them. And then, the last item that I want to talk about is, why do we keep having people raise taxpayer money? I don't understand it. I think, I think they probably hit the max, the last people that did investigations. And now we have another person doing an investigation, and this is a waste of taxpayer money. And I, I'm here to say that if a council member launches an investigation against another council member, and those things are not sustained, that council member pay out of his pocket. Because this is not his or hers. This is not fair. This is not right to the, to the city of Coalinga. It's not right to the citizens. And so, I would say that we need to be more prudent with spending taxpayer money on hearsay investigations. And lastly, I just want to talk about the budget. I probably hardly have any time. But I know you want to get like, you know, four groundskeepers, and I'm sure that a couple of police and some firemen, stuff like that. I just would ask that you guys would look into making a five-year plan, a five-year spending plan. Other cities do it. And basically what you do is you, you look at the money that you've taken in from Measure J, and you look at the money that you've spent extra on police and fire and places like that so far, and you take that times five years. And then you say to yourself, okay, with the increases in medical insurances and things like that, are we going to have the money if you include, you know, the calpers and things like that? Right now, you're bringing about a million dollars a year in cannabis. You're bringing in, you know, a million plus in Measure J. Once Measure J runs back out, it'd be a cruddy thing to have to let go of people. That's messing with people's livelihoods. We did it a long time ago. It was a horrible thing to have to do. So I just ask that you guys be prudent on the budget. And, and then also, I just wanted to say that Jasmine is amazing on her budget. I looked over it, and it, it looks amazing. And you guys are lucky to have her. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Mercedes, do, is there anybody else in the audience would like to say anything? Okay, Mercedes, go ahead and read what you have.
This is from Gray Cody. Due to the city council giving the code of conduct total disregard, I realize I'm seeming to the choir. Nevertheless, I would like to say I believe it is at the very least extremely unprofessional, immature, and unethical for a city councilman to post jokes and derogatory remarks about suspects who have been arrested. Council is forbidden to interfere with police affairs and investigation. Council is forbidden to interfere with police affairs and investigation. Council should allow police to do their jobs, and instead of bashing, will look for ways that could possibly help individuals who have taken a wrong turn in life. Oftentimes, they themselves are victims which have caused them to do so. I also feel it is a bit hypocritical of councilmen when pointing out the costs that he described could have been used to repair roads. I would have meant, how many roads could have been repaired with the cost of all the police calls and arrests of said councilmen? Council lost its integrity a few years ago. And even if it started acting appropriately, it would take them more than a decade to restore. In closing, I would like to add that council also needs to start listening and taking the advice of the financial director and stop blowing the taxpayers' money like teenagers who just acquired an inheritance. Some financial classes may also be helpful. Gray Cody.
Did you have another one?
I have one, one other. This is from the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Benjamin Tykina. For over 112 years, the Coalinga Chamber of Commerce has made economic vitality and community engagement our top, top priority for our members and citizens of Coalinga. Beyond the scope of hosting events and lobbying representatives for charitable works, the Coalinga Chamber of Commerce gives businesses the opportunity to network as well as presents business owners a positive light to the community. The Coalinga Chamber of Commerce is your business partner, a valuable tool for any small business owner and should be fully embraced. We reach out to you this evening to request the approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Coalinga and the Coalinga Chamber of Commerce, stipending a $15,000 award committed to enhance the support of community business. The Coalinga Chamber of Commerce recognizes the challenges COVID-19 has presented to business, to the business community and citizens of Coalinga. Our community development has always been our number one concern. Proceeding forward with this potential partnership confidently, we will provide and achieve the revitalization of our local area. We strive to continue communication regarding our operations within the industry, state, and local officials, as well as our community to bring our business and citizens much-needed resources while continuing to be a catalyst for business growth. A corner of leaders, influencers, and a champion for a strong Coalinga. Sincerely, Benjamin Tykina, Executive Director.
Okay, thank you. Is that all then we have tonight?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have a public hearing. We have none. Number five is consent calendar. Number one is approved minutes of the May 6, 2021 meeting. Number two is authorize the police department to change its CAD and RMS systems to a Mark 43. Number three is authorize staff to honorarily name a portion of Durian Avenue outside City Hall as Lander Lane. Number four, authorize city manager to amend the police department's sworn job descriptions. Number five, direct staff to research streaming of Coalinga council meetings live on city Facebook page and develop a plan for implementation to present to council. Number six, adopt Resolution 40626, approving a list of projects to be funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, and further authorize a budget expense in an amount of $353,505 to execute the list of projects funded by SB 1 in the 2022 fiscal year. Number seven, receive, report, and approve a regulatory permit for cannabis retail facility with delivery and onsite consumption at 144 East Durian Street. Number eight, adopt Resolution 4028, anticipated revenues derived from the Coalinga Police K-9 Foundation. Number nine, adopt Resolution 4027, authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the financing of a fire truck, providing for the reimbursement to the general fund for funds expended in purchasing the truck, retaining a municipal advisor and a placement agent and bond counsel, and direct certain actions with respect thereto. Number 10, authorize assistant city manager to execute a task order with Blackwater Engineering to prepare, to, ah, excuse me, to prepare and a preliminary engineering report related to the water filtration plant in connection with the 2020 water bond projects. Number 11, Public Works Utilities and Community Development Monthly Report for April 2021. Is there anything that you would like to pull?
Number eight, please.
Number eight? Anything else?
Yeah, number seven, please.
Number seven? Okay. Okay. We'll go down to number seven first. Receive, receive report and approve a regulatory permit for a cannabis retail facility delivery and onsite consumption at 144 Durian Street. Sean? What would you like to know?
Which, which business is it? Because there's, there's two parts of that building. Is it, is it the cookies that they're actually working on right now? Or does that include the second one, or just, just that one only? From, just the one, okay. I thought she was going to be doing, or they were going to be opening up something on the next door, too. Okay, so two completely different deals. Okay.
Okay, and number eight, adopt Resolution 4028, anticipated revenues derived from the Coalinga Police K-9 Foundation.
I just want Police Chief to give us an update on how much they got and say what he wants to say about it.
Back in 2018, the community had sponsored fundraising efforts to obtain the K-9 for our police department. In 2009, we purchased that K-9.
Hey, Chief?
Over the last couple of years, we had-
Hey, Chief? Is your mic muted still?
Sorry.
There you go.
Over the last couple of years, we've done some fundraising, and because of COVID last year, we kind of struggled with the funding coming in. But on May 7th, we held a, our first annual golf tournament for K-9 Eli. I'd like to thank all the businesses in the community that supported us for this. And after paying all the bills, we, we brought in 20 grand from this golf tournament. So, the 13,000 that I'm asking for tonight will budget, will be placed in my budget to fund the dog for this fiscal year.
So that'll fund the dog? Just this one thing funds the dog for the rest of fiscal year? Awesome. Very good.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to accept, or?
I'll make a motion to, to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Horn and seconded by Councilman Atkinson. Roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
And I also vote aye. Thank you. Consent calendar passed. Okay, number six, ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Number one is discussion and direction regarding the fiscal year 2021, 2022 proposed budget. Jasmine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a 75-page document of your first draft of your proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year in 2021 and 2022. This is the first time that you're seeing the revenues collectively with all of the operation expenses, as well as the personnel portion. And so, we can do it where I go through each fund. But I think, in the interest of time and the time of everybody here, it'd be best if we would just kind of go through it together, have the council ask their questions, and then we can kind of work through the document if, if that's the preferred way for everybody else. We could go through and answer questions first. And then I think through that, we'll be able to work through the budget, and whatever funds are missed, I can kind of give you guys a high-level overview of those.
Okay.
Because I think there's questions.
Okay, what would you guys like to do? Would you like to do it that way?
Yeah.
Everybody? Horn? Okay. Yes, go ahead. Any que, do you want questions first, then?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Okay.
It was circulated, it was on the website, I mean, it was on the agenda, and the council was giving copies, and so we'll go through it that way.
All right. Any questions from the council? Just go ahead and go ahead.
So, I'm looking at this budget, and we're growing, obviously. I'd like to talk about the personnel that staff has asked for the city to hire, which is going to obviously be an extra cost for the city. So, let's kind of go through them a little bit at a time. One, we're asking for four groundskeepers in this budget, which is a cost of 76,000 per groundskeeper, per groundskeeper for a total of $304,000 per year to the budget. Second, we're asking for an accountant. I know Jasmine needs a lot of help out there. That's $115,000, of which $18,000 comes from the general fund. We're also asking for two police officers. That's going to total 101,000 per officer for a total of $202,000 per year extra in general fund money. We're also asking for a custodian. Custodian cost is $74,000. Right now, we pay $25,800 for a part-time custodian. So that's going to be an extra burden to the budget as well. We're also asking for a fire prevention captain, which is coming in at $188,000 a year, which is obviously going to become from the general fund. So that's going to be an extra burden as well. We are also doing fireworks and several other things. So my, my concern is, are we hiring too many people? When we take all these numbers- When we take all these numbers all together, three, four, five, six, we're darn near a million dollars. Can we do that when we have Measure J is coming up in less than eight years? It's going to be going away. Can we do all this? So I propose a few things. I think that we should not go with four groundskeepers. I think we should go with two. I think the accountant needs to happen. I know Jasmine needs a lot of work. She does lots of work. I think we need two police officers, and I think we need to open investigations as we said we would when we passed Measure J. Still hasn't happened, so hopefully with these two, we will be able to. That's your intention, right? If we pass for two more officers, you do plan on opening investigations with these two, correct? Okay. Code enforcement, I forgot to mention that. That's another $95,000 a year that we're adding to the budget as well. I think we need code enforcement. I think the people really want code enforcement. Fire prevention captain, 188,000. My, my, my concern with the fire prevention captain is that we could also have a fire prevention captain, and then later on, just like we told Measure J voters, is we would get a deputy fire chief. Well, how about we hire a deputy fire chief, so that way we don't have a fire prevention captain and a deputy fire chief later on down the line? Let's just move it straight to deputy fire chief and have him take over fire prevention duties. Would that work?
Sorry. It would work. However, what would be better for my organizational structure is we are separating it into divisions. So we have operations division, prevention division, and EMS division. So it would be better to have division chief rather than a deputy chief, and one would be a fires and prevention chief, and one would be an EMS chief. We could do one this year and one later if that were to be an issue. But for my organizational structure, it would better to have a division chief title rather than a deputy chief.
Okay, so a division chief, we will call it.
Correct. And that division chief can do prevention, yes.
So perfect, so that way we don't, later on, next year, we're not hiring
Councilman Atkinson, I just want to point out, though, that plan does include two bodies still, which is what you were trying to get away from.
Right, because we're doing, yeah. I think the eventual goal was to go in that direction anyway, right?
The eventual goal for the long-term plan of my five-year strategic plan is to have that. We wouldn't have to do two this year. We could do one this year, and we can do one later.
Okay. And I understand that if we do go with a deputy or division fire chief, that there will need to be some raises in order to tell me what the language I'm looking for.
Yeah, so right now, there's not a gap really between the fire captain position and the fire chief. They go into each other's pay scale. And so to establish a division chief, we would have to raise the department head pay scale, and that pushes everyone's up a little bit.
So in doing so, that would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 or somewhere, generally around that neighborhood. Having done that, we also save by not having a what's it called? Fire prevention captain? Yeah. Instead, we hire just the division. What I want us to do again is become so top-heavy like we were in the past.
But then we would, then we would have to hire another one later?
No, so the, the long-term goal for the fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have division chiefs already. So that's what the goal is already. What I wanted to see us do is hire two division chiefs and a fire prevention captain. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm just, I have a problem with a city our size. Having, are other cities our size are doing the same thing? I can see if we were a bigger city, but a city our size, do they have that?
The city of Selma does, and the city of Kingsburg is in the process of adding a division chief. I don't know about any other cities besides those two.
Okay. I just don't want to be the, the first one on the block to, to start doing that, you know, and it's just, I, I support the fire department totally, but I don't want to see us get, just like he said, too top-heavy, because we'll have a lot of chiefs and no workers, you know, so.
Well, I think it also is not looking at it right now. It's looking at the future, and if we have it in place for the future, we don't have to worry about it. Like, like Councilman Atkinson was saying, we don't want to hire a prevention captain, and then down the road, we need a division chief. It's duplicating the same workload that the preventionist captain is doing. If we plan for the future by establishing the rank and structure now, we don't have to fill the positions now, but we could fill one of them now and one of them down the road and establish the future rather than looking at just currently what we have right now. And, and that's my goals and objectives for the next five years.
As a future two division chiefs?
And one would be, one would oversee the day-to-day operations of our, our new EMS division, and then one would oversee prevention. So it's two different assignments. They're just called division chiefs as far as the rank goes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, go ahead.
I wanted to point out real quick, that is a similar structure that what we have in other departments. So the police department has a police commander who's a mid-management employee. The fire department currently does not have any mid-management positions. You have the captains who are the shift supervisors, and then you have the chief, but you don't have that buffer of a mid-management position. And also in Public Works, Sean has two divisions, so he has Public Works, and then he has Utilities, and each of them have a supervisor, and they're both mid-management employees. So currently, within the entire city, the fire department is the only department that does not have mid-management positions.
A captain is not a mid-management?
No.
Mayor, may I say one more thing? The EMS division chief will be behaved out of IGT because it's EMS only, and so we could use his salary out of IGT.
Or her.
Yes, or her, I apologize. They.
Yes.
Yeah, I got a question. Would you be able to go internal with the employee that you have already and switch them up and then hire a lower-level employee to replace?
I would like to. I would, off the top of my head, thinking about qualifications internally, I'm not sure.
Would it be cheaper to train them than it is to hire someone off the bat and just switch them up?
As far as training them for the division chief position?
That actual position.
I'd have to think about that, but yes, possibly, because they'd only need, well, the biggest thing is the educational requirements. For a division chief, you're looking at a bachelor's degree.
Right.
And then you have other fire certifications that come along with that. Would we be able to find someone internal? I don't know, I'd have to look externally. Then you're doing a recruitment process, and we would have to see what we would get.
Thank you. Go ahead. Adam?
That's basically what I want to say for right now. That saves us quite a bit of money, and we can put that into the reserve, help meet a 50% threshold or whatever, whatever it is.
Okay.
So I don't know, do you want to talk about them one at a time? Want to talk about groundskeepers? Or, so each groundskeeper, $76,000 apiece totaling $304,000 to the general fund.
Now, do you want, like tonight's meeting now, are we making a decision if we have these right now?
Yeah, so, so tonight is the, the all-out hash-out meeting. Go through the whole budget, make your changes, talk about anything you want to talk about, because when we come back to the June 3 meeting, I'll be bringing forth the, the final proposed budget for you to adopt that night along with the resolutions for adoption. And so, you know, it's very, very important that we go through and we answer all the questions. We take all your revisions, we take all your proposals tonight so that I could get to work, you know, this next week to put something together that fits the needs of the council, that fits the needs of the staff and the city and the departments, so that it's a budget that's most likely to be approved, or we would prefer for it to be approved on June 3, because we don't have a council meeting on June 17. And it's imperative that we pass a budget before June 30.
Okay, thank you.
And so if, Adam, do you have any more? I could kind of go through and do a high-level overview, kind of touch on some highlights. And so page one is a overview of the general fund. The very far right column shows you the proposed budget for 2022. We are beginning the year with a positive fund balance of $4.4 million. Our total revenues that we're proposing for the year is $9.8 million. And the total expenses being proposed by all departments of the general fund is $9.7 million. And about the middle of the page, something new that we're bringing forth with this budget is a reserve. We, I've created a fund number 100, which is the general fund reserve fund. It'll act like the city's savings account for the general fund. All funds that are reserve funds will be moved out of the Fund 101 general fund and be transferred over to Fund 100, which is the reserve fund. So when you look at reports and things like that for the general fund, you will see the reserve balance in a separate fund. And it'll be the savings account, and the general fund will be your checking account. And so with this budget that's presented before you, we're putting about $63,000 into the reserve as it's shown. However, we've gone through some ideas and discussed some options to bring that reserve balance higher. We are at a 50% threshold, our reserve policy requires us to keep 50% in our reserve account. And so since we're passing, we're looking to pass a budget for $9.7 million. The 50% reserve balance will be $4.8 million, which means we'd be adding close to, I don't know, anywhere between $3,000 to $400,000 into the reserve. Now, we're still working on our fiscal year 2020 audit, and so as we sit right now with everything posted but still not complete, with the audit completed, the general fund has a reserve balance of $4.3 million. And so in order for us to get to that 4.8, it's about $500,000, and it's not taking into account what we're going to save through operations for fiscal year 2021, which is the year, year that we're in. Does that make sense? I know I kind of went fast, but it's a new concept. And so we're showing a balanced budget this year and putting $63,000 into reserve, which that reserve balance is going to be higher, because there's a couple of ideas that we've discussed. One, we just went through the positions, and another one is that within this budget for the fire department, we proposed $410,000 in equipment expenses as the council requested at the last council meeting of purchasing the Type III truck. And with conversations with the fire chief and his department, they're proposing that we'd be purchasing or making our initial payment for that Type III truck in year 2023. And so that $410,000 that's shown on page, page 13, is showing $410,000 as his major machinery and equipment will come down to $60,000. And so that's one change that has kind of come into play that isn't reflected in this budget, because it all came about after the, this draft of the budget was posted.
So would that go into the reserve portion then, since we're not spending that money on that? So when we look at it, we're looking at over $400,000 going to reserve?
Yes, well, I don't know what the cost estimate is of the savings that you're proposing from these positions.
Well, a, a, as it sits right here, as we're looking at it, since we're
So 410 minus 60 is about 350, and so that'll be going into the reserve.
Okay.
Okay.
And so that's the general fund in, in a nutshell. I'll answer any questions, and we'll, if not, we'll move on to the next funds.
Now, IGT is not in the general fund, right?
IGT is not in the fund, and so if you notice, the fire budget is quite a bit lower than it has been in the previous years, and so something that we, I worked with the chief and chief Dupree, Dupree and I worked together to move out all EMS-related expenses directly into the IGT fund, which is Fund 117. And we can talk about that. That is shown on page. What is it? 27. So on that page 27 in the proposed 2022 column, you'll see a whole bunch of accounts added. And so this is just a duplication of the fire department budget line items into the IGT fund for only those related to EMS expenses. And so we're charging all EMS expenses directly into IGT instead of doing a transfer out of IGT into the general fund. It's a much cleaner and better audit, audible, auditable process than to do lump-sum transfers. I think if you can recall back when I started, there were some lump-sum transfers happening that the auditors didn't like, and we had to pay them back. And I don't want to be in that situation again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. If you go to page two, there's some analytical analytics related to the percentages of increases and decreases within each department year over year. And so that kind of helps you see that.
In that far-right column, you can see the difference between the current fiscal year and the proposed amounts for the fiscal year. So like for elected officials, it would be going up 4.7%. For community development, it's going down 18.7%. So along that far-right column, you'll see those changes.
And so it's weird to see the elected official's budget go up because we got rid of all people who, we didn't, we didn't get rid of them. They were left. Who had medical benefits, and we see that our budget actually increased by 4.7%. And I believe some of that has to do with fireworks, is that correct?
Yes, so because you authorized the fireworks show, this budget assumes that you're going to authorize the fireworks show next year. And so the firework expenses in there, I believe we budgeted $30,000. And then what all, what else is new is the youth and government program that's budgeted in the council's budget, so I think that was 18,000, and that's really your increases along with budgeting. I believe we put in $40,000 for the election expenses, which is really to redo the district maps.
And can you just explain real quick the 130% increase in administration?
Yes, so within that, we added the custodian, one full-time custodian and one full-time code enforcement officer, and then the rest is just health insurance increases and retirement increases. And then also the city clerk has a larger allocation, as does the senior administrative analyst from the current year because of transit going away. So that cost is now going to the general fund, and then the city clerk's cost to RDA decreased a little.
Okay, Sean, how would you feel going from four, getting two groundskeepers, and then we reassess it in six months at the mid-year budget review?
I mean, I think that's something we can, we can work through, because there, I mean, there are some unanticipated revenues that may come later on in the, in the fiscal year that weren't provided in here. So I think that we can do that. I mean, our goal with the groundskeepers and the landscapers is to really allow them to focus on continuing to keep the, the town upkept and beautified and do some additional improvements that we've been wanting to do. And so, because our maintenance workers are the ones doing that, but then when we have water leaks and other issues that they have to respond to, they have to get, go away from those things. So ultimately, you know, four would be ideal, but we can, we can definitely work with two as of right now, and then definitely revisit it as we move along the fiscal year to see where the revenues are moving forward.
But for a grounds crew, I mean, couldn't you even, I don't know, outsource for that within the city? I mean, you got a lot of trucks driving around doing that type of work.
There's definitely a possibility of that, but I know that there's been some scrutiny of the, of proposals of outsourcing when the city can hire, you know, hire folks here in town. I know there was a discussion regarding code enforcement, and also, you know, some other positions going outsourced, but that's definitely something that I could pursue and look at costs associated with that. Based on what needs to be
And the city council is going to give the scrutiny left or right. I mean, it's, it's just something that we have to deal with at the end of the day. I mean, because what we're doing is for the city, though it may not be directly in hiring. We're not looking at going to Hanford, you know what I mean, and getting a And getting a individual to do the in grounds, we're going at what we got here within the city of Kalinga. You know, I mean, you have a lot of people that do grounds keeping around town. I mean, it just kind of eliminates us having to even insure them. That's on them. All we hire you to do is maintain the grounds. What your boss does.
We can definitely look into that. I mean, we've had internal discussions about that because those are our options. Um, so, I mean, we can continue that, we can continue to pursue that and get a, get maybe a cost as we move forward. That's something the council would like to do. We can definitely bring that back.
I, I would love to see that. Um, I don't know how that's going to affect the budget or with us passing the budget if we're asking for Sean to come back with numbers that have to do with outsourcing groundskeepers.
I think what would be ideal is that you, um, if the council is agreeable, um, we can keep in the cost for the two groundskeepers and then, um, look at not hiring them immediately and look at outsourcing and get those costs. And if it comes in less than hiring two groundskeepers, then we can do that. And that's going to be a cost savings in the budget. It'll be different line items. Um, but at the end of the day, you're going to save money. Um, and then if it comes up higher, then maybe the council says, go ahead and hire those two people.
How much was it for two groundskeepers, right?
So they're about seventy six thousand dollars each.
So that's over a hundred, because, uh, I know when we were using a, a labor at the prison, you could get a whole crew for about eighty thousand dollars a year. And so you get six guys for, for eighty thousand. So that would be something to look into too. I don't even know if they still, um, have that program because they are, are losing all their, uh, level twos and stuff like that. So we could, we could possibly look into that too. If we could, because that would be money well spent. I know we, we only get them certain hours, but, and you can't call them out for, uh, you know, other stuff, but it's just be, it would be just maintenance and cleaning up.
That, that was the challenge. I, I recall when we had the crews before, um, they primarily worked in alleys. They weren't working in public spaces, uh, such as parks and other locations that we need them working in. Um, and so they were basically with weed eaters, working down the alleys, cleaning weeds and picking up trash. I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not, it's, it's not that we can't have them in those, in those spaces. Um, but the amount of work that's required, like you said, I, I don't know what the time, what the timeframes are. Once it gets to a certain temperature or a certain time of the day, they had to go in. So they, they don't even necessarily work a full shift that we would need. Um, in order to, and the whole goal is to try to reach a level of, uh, you know, that we're really trying to beautify the community and really trying to stay on top of the maintenance. And I think that's been very challenging with the current staffing we have. I don't know, but we can definitely look into it and as an option to, uh, see what they can offer. Um, and then compare that to, you know, working with a private entity and then also working with, uh, just hiring and hiring locally.
I don't, I don't even know if they still do that program, but
Yeah.
I know that it was about eighty thousand for a whole crew.
And I just want to point out, um, I know that sitting council members know this, but we do have, um, some new council and then some members of the public. So when we budget, um, vacant positions, we always are very conservative and we budget the maximum cost that they may cost us. So we assume that they're going to choose the PPO health insurance plan, which is a little bit more expensive. We assume that they're going to have a family. We assume that they're going to be CalPERS classic members. Most of those things are never true, um, but we don't want to say that it's going to cost fifty thousand and then the one person we hire costs seventy six.
Right.
So it can be a little bit less, but we always give you the highest number.
Thank you.
What, what was your cost of all the, I haven't got to this section yet, but what was the cost of all the part-time groundskeepers that you guys had for the last couple of years? What was the cost each year versus, versus hiring the two new ones? Was it higher or less?
The part-time groundskeepers, what we did was when we had vacant positions, we would split the full-time position into two part-time positions that were temporary. So it was the same cost, except they worked half-time. So you're, so the two full-time groundskeepers would have been about the equivalent cost of four part-timers. You would save in the benefits, but they can only work a certain number of hours, um, because of CalPERS rules and then we would have to let them go.
So would hiring these two prevent happen to hire any more part-timers? Or is that, or is that going to be an issue later on?
No. So we, we usually only hire part-timers when we have vacant positions. So if we had, if we hired the two groundskeepers, we may still have part-time temporary maintenance workers if a maintenance worker leaves.
And I think we did that on the last budget and it's still in effect, which is we have one of the full-time maintenance workers that we utilize to, um, part-timers.
And at the water plant as well.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Uh, moving forth to page twenty. Uh, page twenty is our little fund one forty where we transferred the one point seven million dollars out of into the general fund to balance and bring that general fund up to whole. And so there's not a whole lot of activity because we used to use this fund to track our grants. And since I've come on board, I've kind of created separate funds for each one of the program types um, as they're required and should be done, is that all Caltrans grants got moved out into a Cal, Caltrans grants fund. And all CDBG grants, which are community development block grants funded by, uh, HCD, got moved into their own fund. And then all home-related grants, which are also HCD grants, moved into their home program fund. And so really all we have in this fund as far as for twenty twenty two is the wrap-up of the Elm and Cambridge Signal project. And, um, something unique that's happening that the council approved in the last couple of months was the use of those, uh, RDA bond funds for the Seventh Street Improvement. So because it's a general fund-related project, because it's funded through bond projects. So what the RDA is doing is the RDA is taking those bond funds, turning them over to the city. And since the city is the general fund, um, the city is turning around and doing the Seventh Street improvements as it was approved by the oversight board. And so that's what you see in that fund.
Thank you.
And the next, uh, fund on page twenty three is the Ein, Ayers, Beeson Scholarship Fund, which is just a trust fund. We hold those funds, we accrue interest, and then once, uh, the interest goes to a certain level, then we give those scholarships. Uh, page twenty four is, um, fund one oh two, which is the Police Department Evidence Money and Trust. It's that, again, it's a trust fund. We just hold that money and, uh, we turn around and turn it back to whoever it needs to go to. Uh, fund one oh three.
On, on that evidence money, do, does the city ever get to keep that?
Yes, in certain cases.
If we, we can't find the owner or the person doesn't claim it, then yes, we can, we can roll it into our asset forfeiture account.
Now, does that go under the account too? If, uh, like you bust somebody with drug money and stuff, does that?
Once everything goes through the court process and they deem, uh, deem the money ours, then yes, we get a portion of it.
Okay. And then you have to give it to Fresno County and everybody else.
Everybody puts their hand in.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Fund one oh three is their federal asset forfeiture fund. Fund one one six is their, uh, forfeiture and unclaimed funds fund. And so they're all trust funds. They just, we hold the money and we do what we, they're restricted in nature. Uh, fund twenty five is fund one oh five, which is the cops grant. Um, it's the hundred and, that hundred thousand approximately that we get every year. Um, and so, uh, part of this, this particular hundred thousand dollars was used to pay for the, the five police vehicles we purchased in two thousand seventeen. It was about fifty thousand, some odd, some odd dollars for the annual payment on that. And so this fiscal year, um, I believe we're making the last payment. We paid them off. Okay, so that must be a, an error there because we're, we're, we actually in the next draft, what we're doing is we're funding a half of a police officer out of this fund and then the other half for your equipment. Fund one oh six, a police department grants fund, no activity there. Page twenty six shows the overview of the IGT fund. And so this, when we bring the final budget to you guys, uh, the key piece of important information that's missing here is the one point eight million dollars that we're going to get in IGT funds in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two. Um, we just received that information today or yesterday, and so we'll be bringing that forth.
That's great.
And then you'll see all the various expenses for the, um, EMS portion, which is a new program and all the related costs moved out of fund one oh one into IGT fund. Page twenty nine shows you all your restricted street fund money. Uh, gas tax fund, TDA fund, which is your article three, TDA article A, and your SB one, road re, road maintenance rehab act funds, right? Yeah. Page thirty shows measure C, me, street maintenance, measure C ADA compliance and measure C flex fund. And the, all these funds are restricted in ma, in nature. They can only be used for street maintenance or street-related projects. And so skipping down. Uh, page thirty nine. This is Sean's page, I call it. It's all of your Caltrans grants. Um, it's got all your, uh, Caltrans-funded street projects. And the revenues and the expenses in this fund must always equal zero because for everything that's expended on grant funds has to have matching revenue if it's put into this fund. And so you'll see a break-even fund balance of zero. Page forty one, forty two through forty three is your impact fees fund. And those are fees that are collected for the new council members. Um, there are fees collected that are on, uh, collected on the, um, building permits. And it's the fair share cost of new construction to buy into the existing infrastructure. Page forty four shows the assessment district fund, one thirty. And there are no proposed, uh, all the bonds that were issued for the, uh, street, uh, special assessments have been paid off. We have no more bond payments. And so everything related to that has been satisfied.
All of our bonds are paid for?
With relate to street, uh, special ma, uh, special assessment districts.
Okay.
Fund forty seven is your fund one fifty, which is your Kalinga Public Financing Authority. And this shows all of your bonds being paid off with the exception of the new water and wastewater bonds that we just refunded. Those are not reflected here. Um, um, so like nineteen ninety-eight series A, B, and C have been paid off. Um, all of the two thousand nine and two thousand RDA bonds were refunded into, uh, the two eighteen funding. And the two eighteen refunding didn't go through the PFA. It was, it stayed in the, in the RDA fund, and so it's not reflected here. Um, and the two thousand twelve water and wastewater bonds were refunded into the twenty twenty one. Page forty eight is the water fund summary for twenty twenty two. And so that you'll see a surplus of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and that's intentional. That was built into the rates to increase the cash balance within that fund. Uh, over the years, we've had trouble, uh, meeting that cash, uh, threshold in that fund. And so when we go on these, uh, calls with these rating agencies who bought these bonds as investors, they ask us, why is the water fund so low on, in cash? So there's a difference between cash and fund balance. Fund balance is, um, the net worth of that enterprise fund. Cash is just fluid cash that you have on hand. And so although the water fund has had a healthy, um, fund balance because there are heavy, there are, um, high, high-cost, uh, assets that it holds, like the well and all those things. But those are not cash. They're not tangible assets. Cash is liquid, right? So, um, that's why there's that reserve. It's intentional. Page fifty five is your gas enterprise fund. And in that fund, you'll see a deficit spending. And that's also intentional. Um, the, the city has been in process of, of, uh, drawing down on a high fund balance and cash balance in the gas fund. And so I remember, I, I wasn't here, but I've been told by Dan that the city has actually had to lower gas rates, right?
Right.
Um, to draw down on this heavy reserve. And so through the systematically buildup of this fund is that we're drawing down and then we're going to come to a point where we're just right. And then we're just going to gradually, um, do a subtle increase, uh, to pay for some of the, um, upcoming capital projects that have been penciled out.
But on that, I'm going to ask you a question on that. Why do we go so low that we have to bring in an increase? Why, why would we do that?
Um, because there's only, so it, because it's an enterprise fund, it's, uh, enterprise fund. Um, it's supposed to just maintain a certain level of cash. And so if the cash gets too high, um, either the rates have to be, um, lowered.
Cash gets too high, can't we just go ahead and buy what we were going to raise the rates for?
I don't know. Um, that's a Dan question that this was just what I, the, the information I was given by Dan that we've been purposely drawing down on the reserve in this fund. And so there's gonna, there's going to come a point where
I understand the reserves and all that.
Yeah.
Enterprise, but I just, I don't see why we would lower it so low when we want to do something, we have to raise it back up. I mean,
I don't think that it'll be like a, it'll be a subtle increase.
Yeah.
Just maintain.
And we kind of, I mean, in talking to Dan, you know, it's kind of a resetting of rates. It's not necessarily, uh, an increase. We're not looking at it because, because what we're going to do is we're going to look at what are our capital needs? We're not down to where we're cash negative or at zero cash. We're, we're going to, we're getting to a point where we're gradually bringing, we've rate, we've, I think we've decreased rates three, two or three times to get the cash down. Once the cash is down to a comfortable level, then what we're doing is resetting rates at that point.
Yeah, what happened when we were, when we were having good years and stuff, we would go out and buy gas years ahead and we could get it at a low cost.
And we're going to be going back, we're going to be looking at that also. Um, I've been talking to Dan and we're going to be coming back to the council here probably in the next couple of meetings to discuss the resetting of the rates as well as future purchasing, um, to give some.
A lot of money in the years.
Yeah, well, we're seeing, we're, we're seeing a, we're seeing a change now. I mean, gas prices have stayed low even all these years. Um, but we're starting to, we don't, there's some volatility right now. And, uh, so I think what's happening is, is that we're looking to commit hopefully something maybe over a three-year period to stabilize that. So we have some certainty in terms of our rates and certainty in terms of what our revenues will be or our costs associated with purchasing gas and transmitting that gas. Um, but once we get to that level, we'll find out what that level needs to be based on capital needs as well as maintaining a good cash balance, um, in that enterprise fund. So historically seen rates lower and lower and lower, which, you know, there's always the comment that, you know, it never gets cheaper, which we've been lucky to be able to, um, continue to lower rates down as we've been able to take advantage of the low gas rates as well. So, or the, the wholesale prices. So we'll be back to the council with, uh, some more information on that as well.
Page fifty nine is your wastewater enterprise fund, which is your sewer fund. And also in this, in this, uh, particular fund, we're drawing down on fund balance reserves. And, uh, some of the major, uh, contributing factors is some, uh, capital activity that's happening in this fund. Uh, just to highlight overview, um, there's about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, proposed for the sewer plant automation and security upgrades. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars for $300,000 for the La Cuesta lift station, and $600,000 for the new Los Gatos lift station. And so we're drawing down on reserves and taking care of some capital projects in this year.
Thank you.
You have a question?
No.
Okay. Page 64 is your Sanitation Enterprise Fund. This accounts for your garbage contract with Mid Valley and as well as your street sweeping. And so we, I, I've built a surplus in this fund intentionally because we're, we've been carrying a deficit fund balance in that, in that fund. And so we're going to build and hopefully not have to raise rates too high to make that whole. Page 70 used to be our Transit Fund. As we all know, Transit's going away. FCRTA is taking that back. And so we've zeroed out that fund. And as Marissa mentioned, there's some costs that are being passed through to the general fund in all areas such as administration and some finance employee costs that are going into the general fund where they were otherwise funded by Transit. Page 72. Is your RDA funds. It's your Low to Mod Housing Asset Fund and your Successor Agency Fund. And all the successor agency is doing is paying off those bonds to pay off that debt. And that's your budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we want to hear all your comments, your recommendations, your changes tonight so that I could go to work next week on putting together a final draft of the proposed budget to bring forth on June 3rd so that we can get it adopted. That is our ideal plan.
Yeah, could we go to page 16?
16?
Yeah, that's the airport. I know the gentleman just walked, walked out a few minutes ago. But I just wanted to ask on there. Is there any money for repairs in this budget right here? And I know we, we do go after grants and stuff. And I'm going to ask for a future agenda item on this. But I was just wanting to see if there was anything in our proposed thing on, on fixing stuff out there because all of us know that a lot of stuff's broken out there, and we do want to have a good effort.
Mercedes is on the line so she can answer specific questions. But there's general repairs out here, basic maintenance, but there's not any projects within this budget proposed.
Okay, then we'll just, okay, future agenda items are coming up, so, okay. Okay, that's all I have. Gentlemen, what would you like to do?
So. Can you just talk about the custodian? I know we kind of went over this, but the $74,000 always concerns me. Hiring another employee concerns me. Having to pay CalPERS and benefits and everything else always concerns me. So can you kind of go over why you think the city needs a new custodian? And if we need more time to have a custodian, can we offer the custodian that we have now more money to do more things? I think, I think the main problem is the custodian doesn't do enough now. So what would happen if we doubled it and you'd fit, you know, whatever? I'm just throwing something out.
So certainly you can do whatever you'd like with the custodian position. That is, the full-time custodian position is a want. It's not necessarily a need, but there are some things that go along with that that we currently don't have available. So we contract out for custodial services. At the same time that we eliminated the Code Enforcement Officer position, I don't remember exactly what year that was, we had three full-time custodians at that time. And the custodians would do all of City Hall and the Police Department. And we eliminated those positions and we contracted out. And we had a company that we contracted with. I believe they were based out of Fresno, and they told us that they were no longer interested in servicing us. So we contacted the businesses in Kalinga that all had city business licenses. Only one was interested. That is who we contract with. He is great, but we're not his only customer. And so he has other businesses that he cleans, and so his availability to us is very limited. We have had some incidents at City Hall where we need something cleaned immediately. We've had kids throw up in the lobby. We've had people smear stuff on the walls in the bathroom. And he only comes out to City Hall twice a week. And one of the days that he's here is Thursdays, which is not ideal because we have council meetings, and you always hear him vacuuming out here when we have the council meeting going on. He does great. Everybody likes him. I'm just not sure what his availability is to provide us with more hours. And we also don't have a lot of the stuff that we had when we had at least one full-time custodian. They would set up for the city council meetings and set up all the tables and chairs. We don't have anyone to do that right now. So it's whoever is available prior to the council meeting is running down here to do things like that. If any staff member has a meeting here, they're responsible for setting it up and cleaning it up. We also have the restrooms that are open to the public right here in between the Police Department and the Family Resource Center. The custodian is responsible for cleaning those and keeping them stocked with supplies. Our restrooms here at City Hall aren't left open, so it hasn't necessarily been an issue. But it would be an issue if they were left open to the public and we only had someone cleaning them once a week. We're going to run out of toilet paper. We're going to run out of seat covers. The trash is going to need to be taken out. And so those are just things to consider. It honestly doesn't make a difference to me if you feel that we need to wait on hiring a custodian or if you'd rather just continue contracting out. Just know that there are some services that we don't provide or are not provided to the, to the level that I would like them to be if possible. But it, it works if that's what we need to do.
Okay, thank you, Marissa. You guys want to take a five-minute break and think about it for a minute? Okay. We're going to go ahead and adjourn and take a five-minute, or let's say a 10-minute break and give everybody time to think about it and see what they want to do. And maybe they could ask some questions on the side and stuff. So we'll just take a 10-minute break.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Okay, we're on the proposed budget. Anybody like to say anything about the budget? Okay, what would we like, what would you like to do? Anybody?
I'd like to see if we can ask the custodian that we have now if he would do more stuff and how much that would cost. But we can say that we're gonna budget for, you know, seventy-four thousand dollar custodian, like we're gonna do with the groundskeepers, and then see if he will be able to do it for cheaper. How about that?
Okay, yes.
Okay, and then how about all the other positions? Do you want to keep all those other ones?
I'd like to see go to two groundskeepers. Well, sorry, I'd like to see if we can outsource it first. But budget for the two groundskeepers, two full-time ones, and then we will do a mid-year but during the mid-year budget review, we can see about two more groundskeepers. Is that cool?
And you wanna, still want to check on the outsourcing of?
Yes, still check on the outsourcing.
For both, yeah, okay.
Correct. That's what I'm proposing. But so the two officers are gonna be specifically so we can open investigations like we told the people we do when they pass into day. Just want to make sure.
And one of the chiefs are paid on the fire, fire division chiefs, one of them is paid by IGT, right?
Correct, and we don't have to do that one this year.
But we could do it next year.
Correct.
We do the first one this year, and then the second one maybe possibly next year.
Correct.
Okay, is it?
Also, um, we had the requests from the chambers for the fifteen, can we put that into the budget?
If that is the direction of the council, we could.
Was that approximately about fifteen thousand?
His request was for fifteen thousand.
And that comes out of the general fund?
Correct.
Right. You know, the chamber does a lot, lot of stuff for us, and...
Speak of the devil, you talk about the chamber.
You heard your name.
Wow.
Locked in at the right time, they just started talking about the chamber.
Good, would you mind going walking up to the podium?
That's perfect timing.
Perfect timing, we just brought you up and about, we heard the, we got your letter, and they said it during another count, and then Councilman Singleton, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Singleton asked about if we could bring it up on the budget tonight, and we can, and you were asking for about a thousand dollars, right?
So essentially, the request was stipulated for fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand, yeah, I was kidding.
No, you're fine. And then if there were, I mean, if there are questions that the council has this evening, then I would love to answer those, those questions for the council. I just, I think that as a Chamber of Commerce, we want to make sure that we are present during these meetings, and we want to make sure that we're cultivating a much more strong relationship with our council and the community, so that we're able to address any concerns that our business membership may have, or if there are things that the council would like to see more of as far as our assistance and resources into our business community, that we are definitely providing that for the community of Kalinga.
Okay.
Is that fifteen thousand a safety number, or is that the actual number?
That's an actual number. So we, as an organization, started to look at our budget, and we were identifying where money was being allocated. So on an annual basis, we work a lot of these numbers into our budget, and we were seeing that we were hemorrhaging actually roughly about seven thousand dollars just to replace the banners throughout the year, throughout the community. And this is something that we, as an organization, really didn't want to have to forego. We think that it brings a lot of beauty to the community aesthetically. I think that people in the community generally like it and appreciate it. I believe there was a citizen who had voiced their opinion about it not being changed, unfortunately. And just through 2020, as an organization, I think that a lot of people don't realize that the Chamber of Commerce is a business like every other business. And while we were witnessing the devastation of COVID to these businesses, we ourselves were also, for a lack of better words, on a sinking ship. And we were approached by many businesses, and we were trying to funnel out as many resources as we could. We were making relationships with Fresno County EDC to bring in resources for these businesses, and providing that to them while we at the same time got zero assistance. Chambers of Commerce weren't recognized by SBA until about January. And so I'm very proud to say that I, as a leader in this community, made the necessary sacrifices to be able to stand before you today as a representative of our Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very grateful for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any questions with them anymore?
Do we know what's going on with Derby? People always think the city is the one who puts it on, and they always come to me and ask me about it, so.
So we have actually been going back and forth with the county to establish what that will actually look like. And we were initially trying to facilitate it in May traditionally. And there were a lot of concerns from the ride company, and more specifically with the Health Department. At the time, that conversation, youth under the age of sixteen couldn't get vaccinated. And the main focus was, we do bring on rides, and their concern was that even though the event as a whole, we facilitate entertainment and activities for families, the rides are primarily used by youth, and so they, we had a lot of concerns about that. So then we started to work with our ride company to identify what contingencies or operational plans were put in place for the safety of youth in the community. And we were essentially quoted the third week of June to facilitate our function. And we were kind of at the mercy of another community, and they had specified if this community did not act on the function, that they would service us. And if they decided to move forward with their function and not postpone it, then they were not going to return to Kalinga for the remainder of the year. So it was very devastating to hear that news. And we started to survey other companies with the potential to bring people in. And ultimately, we were very fortunate to be offered an opportunity for our contractual agreement with Butler Amusements. They called us, I believe, the twenty-third of April, and they had specified, we have a solid date, we have you on the calendar, and as a courtesy, we've called you first. We could have offered it to another community, but we really like the business that we do in Kalinga. But the concern was that we needed to give them a firm yes or no that date. Otherwise, they were gonna give it to the other community, and we were not gonna have attractions, essentially. And so we agreed to their request of approval for that. And so we are gonna operate a Hornet Derby the first through the fourth of July. Yes, sir.
This is for sure.
That is for sure. That'll be at Olson Park?
Still, it'll, correct, okay. Yeah, someone, it got around, because I just heard about this yesterday, that they were trying to say that they were gonna do it out there at the sports complex, too, at the same time as fireworks show.
So the challenges that we face as far as utilizing that property or any other property within the community of Kalinga is the lack of access to water and electrical. The unfortunate reality is that a lot of these venues are not equipped for that capacity of a function. And so we will maintain the operation at George Olson Park this year and moving forward until we can identify what long-term goals these organizations, such as the Parker Recreation District, has as far as supplying access to water and electrical at those properties.
And do you have something happening on Memorial Day?
We do. So we were very adamant about trying to maintain as many traditional things as we could over that weekend. And while we can't do the full spectrum of our function, we were working diligently with the Health Department to identify what was appropriate and what was not appropriate for our community function. So we are actually gonna be facilitating a softball tournament the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth next weekend. We are still in the process of establishing our Hornet Derby Parade. Spacing regulations with the Health Department, we have submitted a countless number of forms to the Health Department, unfortunately, but we have gained the approval to move forward. And then we are also partnering with the Kalinga Elks Lodge to facilitate a small sales function.
Wow, and you're also having?
Pancake breakfast with the Fire Department and the water fights on that Monday following. My room is like everywhere, I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, thank you very, any more questions?
Yeah, the pancake breakfast and the water fights are the exact same time as they are every single, correct, okay.
Yeah, so the pancake breakfast will be facilitated that Saturday morning, and then the water fights will continue on the Monday.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Okay, gentlemen, it's been asked to, do we have to vote on that then, to add something to it?
So you're gonna vote on the budget at the next meeting? And so what we need today is just direction from the council with a consensus from the majority of what you would like to see in that budget document.
Okay.
Do you want me to go over what I have so far, so you guys can all tell us if you're okay? Okay. So we are gonna budget for one full-time custodian and two part-time ground, or I'm sorry, two full-time groundskeepers. But we're gonna look into outsourcing those as well. We're gonna approve the one accountant, the two police officers, that's gonna trigger opening the investigations unit, the one full-time code enforcement officer, one fire division chief, and fifteen thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else? Questions? Changes?
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Now, we have a mid, mid-year review, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things kind of in the works right now. And really, in order to be, for it to be a conservative budget, we don't want to put it in because we don't know the likelihood, the likelihood looks promising, but we don't want to put it in and pass a budget and then have it turn out that it fell through, because it happened to us at the beginning of the Canvas Venture. We started out putting in projects that looked probable, and then they would fall out, and then we would be facing a budget shortfall. And so there's a lot of projects as such that are kind of in the works, and they look promising. So yes, at mid-year, we'll take a look, and we'll see where we are, and then add anything that the council feels that needs to be added or removed, depending on our situation. I still do say, you know, I wouldn't say that we're poor and we need to act poor, but we do need to be really, really critical of our spending, because it took a long time and sacrifices of a lot of employees. A lot of families were impacted by those budget cuts in 2018. And so we want to be mindful of that, even though we see a big reserve. I always remember those times, because they were difficult times for Marissa when she had to make those tough decisions, and then actually for you to make those tough decisions and for her to execute them. So just everybody, you know, in the room and everybody watching, even though we have a reserve balance and it is high, we do want to remember those times, and we never want to go there. I don't want to ever go there, and so that's, you know, kind of just where I'm at.
And how lo, how long do we have for Measure J still?
Eight more years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring that up, too, to keep it in our mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah, keep that in mind, and so, you know, that reserve becomes very critical. You know, one of these cannabis businesses kind of shutting down and leaving can have a detrimental, detrimental impact on our, on our financial standing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to next item then. Discussion, direction, or potential action items regarding the installation of benches in various locations in the city. Sean, and that was brought to by Mayor Pro Tem Singleton?
You know, this was brought to me by the citizen who just walks, you know? I love that. And the request was for a place to sit down every now and then when you're walking. I get that, that makes sense. And that was my proposal to Sean, not just in District Three, but throughout the city, certain areas, for example, by, was that Napa, when they walked down the straightaway, just a bench to sit down and relax a little bit. And Sean said he could take care of that, no problem. What you got, Sean?
Well, I was waiting for you. I mean, whatever the council would like to do in terms of benches throughout town, I know that along Elm Avenue, we have several benches that we placed around areas. I think, I think it's appropriate perhaps to put benches in locations where there's probably heavier foot traffic, not necessarily in neighborhood locations. So I think it's really up to the council, kind of, I mean, we can probably establish some locations in town, if that's what the council would like to look at in terms of some of these other, other areas. It's a little challenging in certain locations due to right-of-way and how much room we have in those areas. Elm Avenue is a perfect candidate because of the fact that it's a ten-foot sidewalk. A lot of our major commercial corridors are, are deeper. Polk Street may be a candidate for those types of amenities. Typically, when you have a bench, you would try to accommodate a trashcan as well, because there may be a reason why they're going to that location. We're also looking at the area on Sunset where we're kind of going to curb in that open area right there across the street from the Catholic Church and from the district HR, the board office that they have. We're gonna be, it's gonna be create a small kind of, you know, triangle-type gathering area, but there'll be crosswalks, there'll be water, there'll be electric, so there's probably gonna be some benches, tables, trashcans, especially for the kids to be able to kind of escape from the, the main campus, since they have open campus, have an area for lunch. And so we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at that as well. So we can, we can basically come back with something that that's what the council would like to, an idea of where we could potentially locate these benches, the style of benches. We want to make sure they're, they're not beds and that they're benches. So we want to make sure we can put a proper design in place that will not attract, you know, unnecessary use of the benches.
Very well put. Excellent.
Okay, do we have money in the budget for this?
No.
I was, so another thing I was gonna bring up, we passed something a couple of years ago with the Memorial Bench Program. Maybe we can tie it into that. We passed, this is like three years ago, where people, we never really advertised it, but people would buy a bench for their loved one or whatever, and their name would be on it and whatever else. Maybe that's something we could also tie into it, and...
There's some in the plaza, I think.
Maybe expanded to businesses, too. Businesses do.
Right.
And we're always open to that. So people can always donate benches. We can always try to find a location for them, but I think if we can establish locations that are appropriate and someone wants to donate them, it's a lot easier to put them in those locations than having to try to find them every time. But people are always willing to donate, you know, to donate the benches if they choose to.
So.
We haven't priced them out in a while, but they could run over $500, $600 apiece. And then of course you've got install, depending on where they're located, they may need a concrete pad. So they're, they could run almost over $1,000 potentially for a bench to be purchased and installed. But we can get some, we'll get some costs associated with them too.
Do you have a question?
So one, I agree, that's where people walk a lot of times. I think one issue that you would run into is we can't put it on the sidewalk because of ADA requirements. And so then your option is asking someone if you can put it in their yard. And that's not generally something that would work well. So what may be a good idea for direction for the council to give is for staff to bring back maybe a map of where we would propose putting benches and have it up for the public so the public can have some input. And then maybe we can get an idea of what that looks like and how many benches that is. And then the public would know what the goal is, like maybe the city is looking for 15 benches. And at that point, maybe people would start purchasing benches in memory of a family member or their organization. But if you wanna give direction, we can bring back a plan for you to look at and really see where they would, where we would propose them that you can always change and we can get public input. And also Sean can find out an estimate of the cost of each bench.
Right.
Can you also get a cost on if it does impede into the yard, the cost for the cement? The actual setting of the bench? Because some of those places, you're not gonna, you're not gonna just want it on grass, you're gonna want it on some of it.
Yeah, we can, we can put together an estimate for eight by four, whatever size slab it's needed to accommodate the bench.
And then could we also look in, in our trail system when we do our trails? You know, add more trails, we could possibly put some benches along the way.
Oh, for sure.
Right now, we don't have any benches around our, on some of our trails.
I only have one segment right now. We're looking, the, the goal is to really kind of get the trail segment going, but those are types of amenities that we're looking at. Once we kind of get a majority or at least half of it complete, we'll be looking at that as well. Space is a little limited, but we do reserve shoulder areas on, on the trails, which would be ideal for for the, for the benches as well. But there's other amenities that we've looked at as well on the trail system.
Okay. I hate saying this, but could we maybe put 20,000 just to get it started? For the budget, I mean, would that hurt us very much if we added that to the budget? Just to get it started? Or have it, you know, so we could buy some benches? And, and people will actually see them and maybe they start donating them and stuff. I don't know how much we need, but I, I just thought maybe 20,000. He said maybe that would be enough to do some of them.
What was, what was the cost of each one of the benches that are, the green ones that are out on the main street on Elm?
I'd have to look back. That was nine or eight years ago. I mean, I could get the estimates, so obviously costs have gone up since then. I mean, we can put together a plan, you know, relatively quick, give us an idea of what those costs are. I mean, the council can always allocate funds, I mean.
You can always, you don't have to put them in the budget today, you can always pass a, pass a resolution. If you do decide to move forward with this program, you could always do an authorization for un encumbered funds or something to that effect and then fund it as an unfunded, unbudgeted.
Yeah, I just don't want it to see like, like he said, we, we okayed it a couple of years ago and it, it never went anywhere, you know, and stuff. So I just wanna keep it going.
We'll, we'll make sure it's kept, we'll make sure it keeps going.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll bring it back. We've got, we've got enough general engineering budgeted for this fiscal year currently. So we can at least start the process, get the maps, identify the locations, ideal locations for benches.
Okay. All right, I think we got that. Next, we'll go to item number three. Council consideration and potential action items on reviewing the city contract with Cannabis Regs. Sean?
Thank you. Mayor and council, staff's just seeking direction from the council as to whether or not to renew the contract with Canoregs. In 2018, the city entered into a contract with Canoregs, who is a web-based subscription service that provides access to all cannabis-related rules and regulations from state, county, municipal, and federal sources. And then aggregates these rules and regulations kind of into an intuitive, easy-to-use database. Canoregs currently provides comprehensive cannabis laws for the states of California, Colorado, Florida, and Nevada to be followed by all other states that permit medical and recreational cannabis. It basically allows the city to see what other states are doing as it relates to cannabis activities, as well as the state of California and other local jurisdictions. Since the city entered into a contract with Canoregs in 2018, the subscription costs have increased each year from an initial contracted amount of 8,500. However, this year, prior to renewal, Canoregs advises the city that they'd made some updates to their, their subscription plans as well as their system. And those prices have been, has increased to $12,000 per year with option to commit for three years at $11,400 per year, effectively saving the city about $1,800 over that three-year period. So staff wanted to bring this to the council, just as, you know, as our responsibility to, to you. The one, that it's a three-year commitment. And if the council so chooses to wanna move forward down that road, it saves the, saves the city about $1,800 over that three-year period. Or you can continue at the, with the annual renewal at $12,000 per year. Staff uses the service occasionally when certain cannabis-related issues arise, such as like tax reviewing, regulation review for particular uses, and various ordinance samples. So, I mean, we don't use it very often. I mean, I'm the primary staff member that utilizes the system. I don't access it very often. And so I wanted to at least provide that information to the council so you guys can make a decision. Staff doesn't have really a recommendation either way. If it's something that the council would like to so choose, it is built into the budget. It primarily comes out, I think, out of the, the professionals, the, what we call MMO professional services. But the cannabis professional services out of the Community Development Department, which has the appropriate funding for it, it's just whether or not the council wants to continue with those services.
Well, I, I, it's, it's been working for us right now and things have been changing right and left lately. So I would wanna go ahead and do it for three more years. And then we could look at it after that and see how much we did use it in the, in the prior, in the years. And because when it comes to cannabis, it's, it's changing all the time. And I think it would help even our police, do you guys have access to that instead? Oh, you don't use it? Okay. Is it mostly laws and?
It's, it's, it's a very in-depth database that pretty much anything cannabis that happens, and I use the state of California as an example, from state, county, to local level. So any agenda item that's on here on related, the word cannabis keyword comes up, that's usually, it gets into their database. So it tracks taxes, it tax, it changes all the licensing that are issued throughout the state. Any changes in local laws, county laws, state laws, federal laws, all of those regulations, everything's accessible through this database.
Now, what would you use if we didn't have this?
So historically, when I've used it, when we went down the road of authorizing onsite consumption, I researched consumption lounges. However, there's only a few that are actually, that permit onsite consumption. So we were able to go, we could go locally to those agencies' webpages or go through a service like Canoregs. In the circumstance, when we updated the indoor cultivation tax, where we went from the square foot tax to the, well, we reduced the square foot tax specifically. We did an analysis through their database to provide that, the documentation to you guys related to what we recommended as a reduction in the cultivation tax. So those are the kinds of things where you can do some research. It's not as often as we used to. When we were going down this path back in 2016, we were a lot more active in understanding and things were changing so often. And I say changing, it's always changing at the state level, but there's not as much changing now that was changing then that directly impacts the way that we administer our permitting process. We've got a pretty tried and true process that we're, that we have here in, in Kalinka. And so there haven't been major changes. But when things, a lot of the changes have really come from the council in terms of what we want to permit or not permit, or maybe changes that we would like to make. But it's not necessarily something that has to be, that's a regulatory change that we have to be, we have to know what's going on at that point.
Right. I know when we first started, a lot of cities were looking towards Kalinka to see what we were doing. You know, and they were using us as their, their example. And a lot of them were doing exactly the same thing we did and to get it started and stuff. So I just, I just wondered if we, do we really need this? And, and like, how, how often did you use it last year or this year?
I've probably logged in twice. The last time I used it was probably when we looked up, when we updated, actually, it's probably been longer than that because the last time I think we, we, I logged in was when we were looking up and researching the cultivation tax, the indoor cultivation tax.
Okay. And then, so we could also get that from some of the advisors we have and on campus. Do you have advisors still with different?
Not necessarily. I mean, we get updates from the Bureau of Cannabis Control and Cal Cannabis, all the different state agencies. Typically, if something changes, we can, you know, there's, you can research online. I mean, there's other options. I know there are other services that offer this same service, so we have, really haven't gotten in-depth in terms of the other services. But I know there are other services out there that provide similar, similar products. But yeah, we just don't use it very often.
Well, using it twice a year for 8,500, I don't think that's usable, so.
And I, and I, and one of the things I wanna, you know, just express is that it's not, it's not an inferior product. There's nothing wrong with any of the products that we've used. It's just that it's the frequency of how often we actually utilize the product.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I think we should discontinue it for at least a year and then check to see if we, we really need it and go from there. And if we really need it, we can bring it back.
And we can explore other options. So if we find that we need it, we can always bring back, bring it back to the council and see if we can explore other options, other services that are out there. Yeah.
Or something like that. Okay.
Is that the direction of the council?
Is that the direction?
I agree.
Okay. Do you have that? Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to item number four. Discussion, direction, or potential action item regarding upgrading the police department's dispatch radios, repeaters, and officers' handheld radios to meet California Department of Justice requirements. Darren?
Mr. Mayor, council, back on April 15th, I brought this before the council and it was tabled and asked to be brought back this evening. The department currently uses what we call the MIP 5000 radio system. It is obsolete, it is met its end of life and there is no more parts that is made to, to keep this, this piece of equipment operational. So if it goes down, we lose our radio capabilities. In, in 2020, October 2020, Cal DOJ and the FBI came out with Safety Bulletin 20 dot dash 09, which requires all law enforcement agencies to begin transmitting over encrypted channels to help protect the identity and security information of people law enforcement comes into contact with and goes. And it went into effect January 1 of 2021. They did, they have allowed us to work as we, as we currently are until we can get this taken care of, but it's gonna happen sooner or later. The department has, has received a quote from Motorola Solutions for the price to redo our dispatch center, our repeater up on the, on the hill for $398,900. Or we can make three, three yearly payments at 136,900. The first payment would be due the year after signing of the contract. So if we sign the contract in July of this year, the new budget, we won't have to pay till the July of the following budget. So not, not the upcoming budget, but the following budget, we would make our first payment. Along with that, the department would like to upgrade its current handheld radio system to accommodate the encrypted radio capabilities. I have, we, we, the department has selected the APX Next Radio. This radio has a capability that when our officers are out of radio range, that it connects to the cell towers and continues transmitting back to the, back to the department so we can keep our communications up, up and running, which is a good officer safety issue, officer safety issue. The cost for those radios is 139,396, which can be broken up into two different ways. It can be broken up into a three-year payment of 50,262 or a five-year payment of 30,995. The first payment would be due at the, at the, following the signing of the contract. So, so like the, the radio inside the, the department, this, this payment would be due the year after we sign the contract. By making the upgrade, we would ensure the police department have radio systems that would support the department's needs and wouldn't have to worry about our system going down. The impact to the general fund total for the entire project would be 538,296 plus $10,986.80 for reprogramming our car radios. And in the payment for, for the next three years would be 187,16229 for the department radios and the handheld radios and a one-time charge of 10,0986 for the car upgrade.
The grand total is what?
538,296.
Now, I know our radios are hooked up with the city of Part Air because we do our dispatching. Are they gonna basically do the same thing?
Yes, they are going before their council tonight as well to, to go for the upgrade.
And with the finance, do you, do you think we could do this? It would be better in a three-year time, timeframe with all?
I think we should pay it all off at once. I'm just kidding.
But feasibly, three years would be better.
Yeah. It's better because it, it's not a hit to our cash all at once. It's much more feasible for us to build it into the budget over three years as opposed to paying it in year one. It's manageable.
And we don't, we don't really lose anything paying it in three years?
No.
We don't? Okay.
And this would ensure, with, with this update, would ensure that the department has a radio system that can get through the next 15 to 20 years.
Okay. All right, council?
Let's get it done. I know Chief is probably getting sick of my text messages to him about it. I'm all for it.
You have a motion?
Yeah, I guess I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Atkinson and seconded by Councilman Horn. Real call vote, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, thank you. We go to announcements now. City manager, do you have any announcements? I'm sorry, I have a question?
Question on the radios, what will become of the existing system?
Our current handheld radios will go to the Fire Department because they're programmed with their channels that they have now, so it would be an upgrade for them. And let's just try and keep hearing to them, they can turn it to the channel and go to work.
Okay, city manager, do you have any reports?
Uh, I actually have several tonight.
Okay.
So, um, we had a vaccination clinic scheduled for Saturday at the fire department. Uh, that has been canceled. It's going to be rescheduled for a later date. We also have some members of our fire department who are getting trained on Saturday to start administering the vaccine. And so what we're gonna do is a kickoff event, um, at the fire department once, um, everybody's ready to go. And then they can actually go out into the community, um, to the apartment complexes, the mobile home parks, um, community centers, and they could administer the vaccine to anyone who wants it. Um, our youth and government program unfortunately did not receive very many applicants during the application period. We did send it to the high school district and the private school here in town. Um, we did, uh, have it on our Facebook page, on our city website. We sent it to the newspaper. Um, so it was advertised. I just, we didn't have very many applicants. So we're gonna reopen it on Monday. So if you know any youth members who may be interested, they'll have another opportunity to apply. We have our Let Freedom Ring event coming up on July third. And I want to thank, um, some of our community partners who are helping to sponsor the event. And so it wouldn't be possible without Parks and Rec agreeing to allow us to use the sports complex. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is helping us with, uh, special event insurance. And Mid Valley Disposal is donating porta-potties and trash cans so that we have enough restrooms and, uh, trash receptacles for the event. Anyone who's interested in being a vendor at the event or having a car, uh, registered for the car show needs to have their application submitted by June third. I, uh, attended the Wardens Advisory Committee meeting at Pleasant Valley. This was the first one back since, uh, COVID. And a lot of times I hear that Pleasant Valley doesn't do a lot for the community. And so, um, I just wanted to touch on something that they shared during that meeting, um, because I don't think many people are aware. So they have events coming up. Um, in May, they're donating, they're doing a clothing drive to benefit Kalinga Middle School at their resource center. In August, they're going to help us with National Night Out. In September, they have two, uh, events they're participating in, World Peace Day and something called Our Promise Campaign. And also in October, they committed the full amount of funds to pay for a city event that I asked them for, um, which is the Lisa Project, and I'll explain that more in detail in a few minutes. Um, but from October of twenty twenty to April of twenty twenty-one, they've, um, donated twenty-nine thousand dollars to various nonprofits. So in October, they gave five hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Special Olympics, fifty-five hundred dollars to Herb's Kitchen. They give, gave fifty-five hundred dollars to the city for the Christmas gift program. They gave a thousand dollars to Valley Children's, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars to Thoroughbred Retirement Foundation, fifty-five hundred dollars to the Boys and Girls Club of Fresno County that's in Huron, and fifty-five hundred dollars to the Imaginarium Institute of Fine Arts. And I just wanted to point that out because I think that a lot of people in the community don't recognize that Pleasant Valley really does give back to the community a lot. Um, the Lisa Project that I mentioned is something that I've been trying to bring to Kalinga for a very long time. Domestic Violence Month is the month of October. And so we are waiting on the actual dates. But it will be one week in October where we have the Lisa Project out in Kalinga. Uh, Pleasant Valley is paying the full cost, which is thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, the Lisa Project is an interactive, um, project about child abuse. It's gonna be set up in the council chambers. And so a person would check in at the front and they would get a headset and it plays in either English or Spanish. And when you walk into the project, um, it's set up like a home. So you feel like you're in someone's house, there's a bedroom, and you listen to a nine-one-one call of a little girl who's been abused. And you walk through this house and, and every house, you're hearing a different scenario. And it's very impactful. I had to do it as part of my training to be a CASA advocate in Kings County. A lot of larger agencies use it for, uh, part of their mandated reporter training for police officers and teachers. Um, I did let the school district know it is meant for kids that are sixteen or older, so they can bring their juniors and seniors over to go through it. It is gonna be open to the public. It is gonna run concurrent with the police and fire department open house. So, um, it's gonna go for seven days straight. And so it'll go over a weekend. And, um, hopefully we get a lot of community members and it doesn't cost anything to go through. Um, they do have a counselor available at the end and information on how kids or others can, uh, report child abuse. And that's all I have.
It's a lot, just like you said. Thank you. Um, any questions for the city manager on those? Okay, uh, council members' reports, anybody? Okay. I just wanna, uh, reiterate the, um, pancake breakfast and, uh, uh, water fights. So you can, you can sign up the day of the water fights and, uh, and this Saturday is, no, it's not this Saturday, the following Saturday is, uh, breakfast and then that following Monday. Oh, yeah, and, uh, also, we, can people still, um, bring their banners down for the memorial, uh, for the, um, veterans?
Yes, so the banners generally go up, uh, around Memorial Day and they stay up through Veterans Day. So if anyone has a banner that they've picked up that they would like to have displayed, just make sure you get it to city hall before Memorial Day.
Yeah. She has a group, she kept, she kept a lot of them at, uh, at city hall too. So, do you know when they're gonna put those up or?
That's a Sean question. I don't know if he knows off the top of his head, but usually they try to do it on the schedule the Thursday before Memorial Day, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, that's usually about the same.
Yeah, it's usually within the last scheduled day, the business day.
And if anybody still wants one, I, I don't know if we can get them before, before this, but you can always, uh, we can get them up later on, uh, if you, uh, wanna, uh, purchase one or, uh, or let us know if, if there's a veteran that died in service, uh, the city will pay for them because we, we had that too and we have some money for that too, so. So if you need any information on that, you can get on the city website or, um, call Kristy at city hall. Okay, um, any future agenda items? Okay, I have one. The, the gentleman tonight, he brought up the, uh, airport. And I did get a letter yesterday. I haven't got it out to the, the rest of the council. I was gonna go ahead and send it to, um, Marissa and then she could send it out to everybody. Uh, cause the way I got it, it's kind of confusing because you know how it, when you have a, it, it kind of all blends in each other. You don't have a certain page for a certain thing. So I'm gonna send it to her first and then she can, or we might even have the, a copy of the letter she could send out like that. He, that way she could, she could get it to us right because it's kind of confusing, uh, the way I got it and stuff. Um, I'd like to, uh, on a future agenda item, bring some stuff about the airport, about, uh, if we can get some grants to fix these. Um, just, and if we, if we have any access to some of the grants. And, and we'll go from there. And, uh, it's just an overview of, of, of what we can do and, and to get it done. And, and to see what, what needs to be done still, because we did have that list. And some of the stuff's gotten fixed and then I just don't want them to, to drop the ball. I want them to keep them going. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go into closed session. We have two items. Um, one's conference with labor negotiators, uh, government code five four nine five seven point six, city negotiators, city manager Marissa Trejo and city attorney Mario Zamora, employee organization, Kalinga International Association of Firefighters. Number two, conference with legal counsel, anticipation litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuit to five four nine five six point nine, uh, B. Will there be anything to open up and close session?
Not likely.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn and go to closed session. Thank you guys for coming tonight.